Yeah, just so far as I imagine that these are comparable and there's been good discussion from the boards around, you know.
Correct, correct. And we don't want to hurt the locals.
Yeah.
You know, we've gone up five bucks on the local rate with the green bean cart. But we don't want to hurt our locals. I mean, they support us the most. We do have non-resident fee and that's come up as well. But most golf courses in this pandemic have seen a big tick in play. So all rates have gone up. So with everything we've done to the golf course with parking lot and the new staffing, it really requires that we utilize our best. And I think golfers more can understand that.
That's good to me.
Did you get some good feedback this last season?
Yeah, real good. Yeah, it's been great.
I was told your article got you a lot of really good publicity that you put in a golf magazine?
Yeah, it's over in the state of Utah, the Airways Magazine. Haven't seen it out yet, but anyways, they'll be sending it out to me.
Good.
But yeah, anything we can do to drop people who play in Lake County, make them stay. And that's why our nine hole rate's a little bit higher than our eighteen hole rate. They get quite a break. They'll stay and play eighteen. We all just build a hotel room and maybe play nine in the morning and head out. But that's why our nine hole rate upsets so much compared to eighteen. Travis, it's not that much more to play your team than how tired they stay.
Yeah.
All right?
Hold them captive if we like that. Any other questions or comments?
No, I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve. And thank you very much. It's good to see you, Randy. It's been a while.
It has.
We have a motion for Maureen. We have a second for Randy. Any further discussion? Call for questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Gary's ordered. Thanks, Randy. Appreciate you. And that has gotten us on the back of our track for time. So we're going to move back to page two. And down to our nine thirty item on item C. White Pine Pump Storage Project Number One. Discussion update from R Plus Hydro on the pump water storage and energy project. Luigi Resta, R Plus Hydro.
Good morning, Luigi. How are you? Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. I'm very good, thank you. Thanks for putting us on the agenda and taking the time today. Today is informative only to provide an update for the project status and what's kind of happened in the last six months and to introduce it to the new commissioners as well. So thank you for the time. My name is Luigi Resta. I'm the CEO of R Plus Energies, the parent company of R Plus Hydro that's developing this. We're based out of Salt Lake City. That family office back with the gardener company. And as part of R Plus, and you've all been given a presentation by the way, and I think it was emailed as well. And there's some back on the desk for anybody else that wants one of those in the public. Little background on R Plus Energies. We are a renewable energy development company. We do solar, solar plus battery, wind, and pump storage hydro projects. We have on the second page thirteen pump storage hydro projects. It's the presentations of twelve, twelve pump storage hydro projects in active development in twelve different states. But across the country in the four different technologies we discussed, we have about forty projects in development. We completed a solar project in Carbon County, Utah, last year and put a scholarship in place there that's called Local First to really help the local community keep the students in the community. So the scholarship is called Local First, which is to allow them to get trade certificates to stay in the community. We also just funded a Local First Scholarship in Iron County, Utah, where we're building another solar project. And to answer some of the questions that were asked earlier, I'll do it throughout the presentation, but we do have twelve projects in active development in the pump storage world. And earlier this week, we got a call from another county commission saying that they had actually hired a grant writer to help support developing the pump storage project because they see it as such a critical need for economic diversity within their community. So I'll just say that there's not been a lot of pushback on supporting these projects. So we have a lot. We're doing it to develop, and this is one of our most advanced projects, the White Pine Pump Storage Project. There is both federal and state level policy that has been really pushing to adopt and support renewable energy development. From a Nevada state perspective, the voters have voted to go 100% renewable by 2050. The utility is focused, NV Energy, on that transition. Part of the Green Lake North and East West projects are to support more renewable energy in their system to make that transition. This project will help with that. And then from a federal perspective, through the Federal Power Act, the BLM has been directed to put twenty-five gigawatts, twenty-five thousand megawatts of renewable on federal lands to support that. That's part of the BLM initiative across the country, and NV Energy Nevada would be no different from that, that there's a significant initiative for that, along with the fact that the federal government is just trying to try and put support, the transition from conventional fuels to renewable. And again, this project will help with that. So by way of the specific project that we're talking about, it's White Pine Pump Storage Hydro. We've been before this board many times over the last four years, and we try to provide continuous updates in terms of the development. It takes a long time to develop these projects, and it's many small incremental steps. I don't think you've heard from us in a little while because we have been working on a larger step over the last six months. But this is a thousand-megawatt, eight-hour pump storage hydro project. It's basically a giant battery. It would provide eight hours of storage, and at a thousand megawatts, that's about equivalent to one-eighth of the state of Nevada's total energy load. So you can imagine that when you build a lot of solar in southern Nevada, or a lot of wind that may come in, this project will help to take that power, to store the energy, so that at nighttime, starting at seven o'clock, or however the utility decides to use it, they would start to convert that water, let it go downhill through the generators and turn it into electricity to allow for a dispatchable, redundant, resilient energy source to help everybody keep their lights on within the whole state of Nevada. So it's not specifically to one town or one area. It's really to help the state. They are that very fast response pump storage hydro. So you can imagine you have an upper reservoir, a lower reservoir. The upper reservoir is full of water because they pumped it up during the day with solar, let's say, and then you need it. The pump storage projects can go from zero, so standstill, to full generation in about ninety seconds, which is extremely fast. If you can imagine bringing a thousand-megawatt power plant up that fast, it's really important. And there are forty-three of these in the United States that are operating right now. Every utility that has a pump storage project in their system, they say they just work, and they really are reliable and dependent. And so this is something that's a known technology. It's a known commodity. We're not talking about a new technology. The only new component to these pump storages is that the pumps act as, they're bidirectional, so they both pump the water uphill and they turn into a generator. So they're a pump and a generator. The one change is their variable speed now. So the old ones were fixed speed units. The newer technology is variable speed, which gives it more operational range, which helps with benefits with the utility, especially as they're transitioning. And utilities are in an impossible position today when you think about electric cars and electric trucks and renewable energy that's intermittent resource with solar and wind and converting from coal to natural gas. So they're in a very tough position, and these are projects that actually help them to satisfy their needs. So over the last four years, since we've been working on the project, we have worked with a lot of local firms that's listed on this next page. We have really been trying to spread, and I talked about, you know, our Local First Scholarship, some of the other work that we've done. When we go in and we're working on developing a project, we try to use as much local resources as possible to support the projects. And on this project, we've had Basin Engineering, REC, Brothers, Comrade &amp; Sons, PETAO. Those are all local groups. HDR has been one of our main consulting firms, and they helped do a lot of the environmental work, which I'll talk about in a minute. They also helped with the FERC licensing. Mark McDonald is our engineer. These are more national organizations because they need the understanding of how pump storage works to be allowed that national component. We as Crux subcontractors to do some of the geotech work, which we'll talk about, G E I, power engineers, and then some of the law firms. So quite a bit of activity already on White Pine as far as, you know, engagement, involvement, and financial benefits that are going directly to those groups, and a lot of that comes from County. This is a FERC regulated process of FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is the group that will issue the license. And as part of that, they require a tremendous amount of stakeholder engagement from very early. And since we started that, we have all the groups that are listed on this page, where there's been engagement with, to make sure that they understand the project and they have opportunities to make comments and to intervene if they, to the degree that they need to. So there is a very, it is a very public process for interventions and discussion with all of the stakeholders. So economic benefit as part of the FERC process and what we've done in the past, we did do two socioeconomic reports for the project. One that we commissioned independently with Science Public Finance Group, and the other one that was done with HDR for the FERC license. Both of them support similar outcomes, which is that this will be, when we start construction, there's an upper reservoir, a lower reservoir. It's a closed-loop system. The majority of the rest of the facilities are all underground, so it's a vertical, which I'll have a diagram in a minute, but a vertical shaft that goes from the upper reservoir down to an underground powerhouse that then goes to the lower reservoir. So a lot of this is underground, and it's civil work, very similar to the mine here where you're moving dirt and blasting. And so for during construction, which we expect would be about five to six-year period of time, it would be five to six hundred people of F T, full-time employees for doing that construction work. And then post-construction, when the project goes operational, it's anywhere between thirty and forty-five full-time people that would be located here, high-paying jobs to actually operate the plant because it's, again, it's a giant battery, but it's a power plant in the same effect. The socioeconomic reports that I just mentioned, both of them made the determination that the local community taxes that this project will generate will be in the range of twelve million dollars a year for the life of the project. So there will be some depreciation of some of the equipment, but there will also be, but it's a hundred-year project, so it doesn't depreciate really fast. And when we've done all the reports, it is, it is in the range of the twelve million dollars over the course of, per year over the course of the life for the local taxes very specifically. It's about a two-and-a-half billion-dollar capital construction project, so that supports the five hundred people for six years of construction plus all the equipment. The next layout, I know most of you guys know exactly where this is, but the lower reservoir is halfway between here, Ely, and the town of McIlve. It's just north of the Gonder substation, and it will be in between the High Line rail and the Main Line as far as the lower reservoir. The upper reservoir then would be directly on the other side of the saddle, up on the Duck Creek side. And then all the powerhouse, the access tunnels and stuff would be down below ground. There is part of, part of the project is a twenty-five, twenty-three mile transmission line that goes from the project site to the Robinson Summit Substation, which is part of all of the new transmission work that you guys are very aware of as it's been coming through the county. Next slide is a more detailed project overview, so you can see where the lower reservoir is, the upper reservoir, the access road. But it will be a new access road going up the Step To side, and that's work that we've been working on with the environmental consultant at BLM to get there. The size of the reservoirs are, the upper reservoir in total acreage footprint, so people saying that this is going to destroy the, you know, the environment, that's not accurate. The upper reservoir is forty-six acres. It'll have a ring dam around it, low impact. Once it's there, there'll be, there'll be landscape so that they blend into the environment, and you won't, you shouldn't be able to see them very much. But it's forty-six acres is kind of the footprint of the upper reservoir. The lower reservoir is about sixty-two, sixty-three acres of surface area. The amount of water that we need to fill the reservoir is we fill one of the reservoirs, the other one will still have water in it, but we're talking about roughly four thousand acre-feet of water for the, for the system to charge it. And then it's, it's non-consumptive use, so you fill the reservoir once, and then you use the same water over and over again. You do need to augment for evaporation, but a lot of that, from the forty-three projects that are in the country, they found that a lot of that does come from rain runoff that end up going down into the lower reservoir, so it's very low. The vertical, the head is what it's referred to, so the vertical drop from the upper reservoir to the lower reservoir, which really makes a project like this work. For this project, it's one of the best in the country. It's about twenty-three hundred vertical feet, a drop with a really short distance between the upper reservoir and the lower reservoir. And then I talked about the transmission line, and the powerhouse is underground, so it will be accessed through a couple tunnels. And then you'll go into a big underground powerhouse where the actual turbines are located to do all the work.
So Luigi, in between the two reservoirs, the majority is going to be invisible underground?
You'll see, well, look on this image here. So the next one is probably great because you can see that where it's located, between the High Line and the Main Line and Highway ninety-three, if you look directly like uphill of the lower reservoir, there will be a road that goes up, and then there'll be a couple tunnel shafts that have doors in them to go into the underground. And you'll have one tunnel that has power lines coming out with a switchyard right there, and then power lines, and everything else is underground.
Okay. You mentioned that you're going to use solar power?
I, we won't use solar power. The utility, NV Energy, likely will use solar power to charge it.
And you have that, where is this solar power field going to go?
Well, it's not, it won't be part of this physical project. It'll be, come from probably southern Nevada, where NV Energy is building a lot of projects. It really, it's going to be indifferent where the power comes from. It'll come through, through the big transmission lines.
What about the power plant that's in Delta, Utah? Will you be using that power?
That power is, no, no, we won't. Most of, seventy-five percent of that power goes through a dedicated DC five-hundred KB line to Southern California. So that, there's a whole business case around that project, but it's not related to this in any way. At the bottom of this page, you can see that we do have a website that's dedicated for the project, and there is some videos associated with it, so you can actually watch a little video that goes through the project. It has some different key observation points. We've been working with NPS and the railroad on additional renderings of what the site is, what it's going to look like from different key observation points for, you know, passengers on the rail or people driving down Highway ninety-three. That work is happening. It's part of, it's part of the process. And we had to identify those locations, both with NPS and the railroad. And so we've done that, and now the renderings have started. The next slide that you see is a cross-section of what we're talking about. So you'll enter in by the switchyard to go, to drive down into the underground powerhouse, the power shaft, the vertical shaft from the upper reservoir is all just under, you know, inside of the mountain, and then it goes to the lower reservoir. So from a dark sky concern perspective, there is no above-ground facility that is going to create lights. And the reservoirs will be fenced at the lower side of the dams, so they won't be, you know, won't be highly visible. It'd be no different than driving past any other kind of construction site. So you, and obviously will blend into the environment. And then there was no need for lights on the reservoirs because they're just small fifty-sixty-acre reservoirs, so this should not have any impact on the dark skies as far as concerned for Progress over the last six months, and I know it's been a little while since we've been with you and a little quiet, we did conduct some additional geotech work out at the site. And because of the seasonal restrictions with sage grouse, that happened between September fifteenth and October thirty-first last year. We did some test pits, and this was in between, again, the High Line and the Main Line rail where those tests, the geology was done, those test pits. The year before, we had done halfway up the mountain kind of for that, for that deeper bore hole. That work was completed. We filed, and the reason why we came before you today is because last Friday, we filed the final license application with FERC, which has taken a tremendous amount of effort from our team and all of the consultants that we listed on the earlier slide. The final license application is here. That's one version of it. It ended up, this will be here in the library because we have to make them available for the public, printed copy, so this will remain here in the library. There'll be a copy of the BLM office as well. But it's a total of nine thousand four hundred pages of information for this project, and that includes biological, cultural, environmental consultation with the different agencies, engineering, water, all of the, this whole project over the last four years is kind of captured in those folders, and it has represented as a big, a big task for us to get to this point. And so what it really includes, like I said, is the engineering studies, the environmental, the cultural. We did some rework on the transmission, refinement on the transmission line, and it is in part of the transmission energy corridor that by BLM already has out there. And then we completed the page one geotech.
I have a comment here, Luigi. There's something that I have some concerns about, and that's the fact that our resource concept, Jeremy Drew, who will probably will be the person that will write comments for your final application. There's, from the time this was filed now, the electronic filing was done February twenty-fourth, not March third. Is that correct?
No, it wasn't, no, it wasn't done March third.
Okay, so this letter then that we got from R was...
It was filed on February twenty-fourth. There were two pieces of it that were actually entered into the record at FERC on Monday morning, the twenty-eighth, the sixth, seventh. So it was filed twenty-fourth, and that's the date for when it actually was filed.
So does that hundred and eighty days, which date does it start from? A hundred and eighty days to respond with comments?
So just as a clarification.
Okay.
Once the FERC receives the license application, they review that for acceptance, and they'll have questions in our auditories, their permission requests, they'll come back and forth. We will clarify that. At some point, the FERC will say that the application is acceptable, and they will go into a NEPA process. That NEPA process includes an E I S process that during that process, there will be scoping meetings and public comment that will be solicited.
Right.
So that timeframe you're talking about starts for when the FERC agrees that the application is acceptable.
So, and so that has not, you've not had notification? So that hundred and eighty days has not started yet?
And it could take anywhere from two to four months, depending on the number of questions.
Okay, that was, because I haven't even been able to really go through myself because there was difficulties with getting it from FERC online anyhow. And so I was, I was concerned for the county to be able to have plenty of time.
This will not be a fast process.
But you asked for an expedited?
We expedited for a two-year process.
Does that mean exped, okay, because I saw the two-year in some of the CFR stuff.
That's for, in a closed loop, which this is, so there's not an existing open body, you can ask for the expedited traditional license process, and it's still a two-year process. So we still have to go through all of the public comment period in the NEPA review process. None of that is shortened.
Okay, appreciate that, because...
And by the way, for access, if you go to that website, there's actual readable version, PDF version on the website that's also downloadable. So if you have any problems in getting access to the FERC site to look at the application, all of the public versions of the application are available on the website.
On your website?
On the White Pine Pump Storage.
Thank you, appreciate that. I'm glad I asked a question.
No, it's true.
Sorry you took so long for me. Okay.
Chairman, did you have a question as well?
No.
Why didn't you?
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's going to be a while before, and I assume that notice will be sent out once it's accepted.
Oh, yes.
So you'll be notified once it's accepted, and they'll, and FERC will then notify. Because once the FERC takes the project, we have limited control at that point, and we will, we won't be able to control all the conversations. FERC will do that, but it will be a public process.
You mentioned the letter that was sent out to various people. We're obligated to provide notification and distribution. The notification requirements are really are set by the way that we manage the number of stakeholders. It's a very lengthy list of people we send that out to. The distribution is limited by what you talked about with the code of federal regulations. And so what you'll see in the library is the public portion of that. There are confidential sections that are only filed with the FERC, so just so you know, not everything is on the website, and not everything will be in the library, but those sections are required by federal law to be held in confidence.
Greg Copeland is our project manager of the project. And then we also have Jess and Ryan, who are part of the project development team for White Pine.
Okay.
The confidential is mostly cultural-related stuff. As far as the licensing process, the next one, it's, this is a FERC jurisdictional project, so they have provided the licensing, and their jurisdiction is driven by what's listed here, but is that there is a tributary, a body, a trickle of water that is affiliated with the project that goes into a larger stream, that goes to a larger stream, that ultimately goes into navigable waters of the U.S. Waterways. So that's one. The other is that there's a federal nexus being on federal property, and this is BLM. So we have two nexuses to, for the FERC licensing process. And they were really set up to do hydro dams and hydroelectricity dams, and this being a closed loop, it's questionable why, but they, but they do have the final license. We have another project in Salt Lake, by the way, Salt Lake City Pump Storage Project that does not have the FERC jurisdiction obligations because the water goes into the Great Salt Lake, and it's non-navigable. Interesting.
What's the difference here? There's no navigable water here, and it doesn't run interstate. So you would be strictly under the state water laws, not the federal water laws.
Well, we're on, we're on BLM property.
That doesn't matter. Look up Hammond versus U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
I'd love to have you come argue for us.
I'm not arguing for you, sir. I'm just telling you the facts. This is Great Basin.
You're exactly correct. The nexus for the FERC licensing responsibility is because it's on federal land. The project is not on navigable waters, and it doesn't have any discharge. And we've actually recently received a letter from the state that indicates that. So it's, it is not triggered by the navigable... So it's, it is not triggered by the navigable waters portion, so you're exactly correct. Thank you. But it is on, on B L M federal land.
It doesn't matter, sir. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services also.